Good evening and welcome to the final round interviews of our candidates for superintendent of Osseo Area Schools. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Ken Graxton.
Good evening, I would like to introduce Lisa Sales-Adams, who is the Assistant Superintendent in St. Paul, and she will be here for her final interview.
Welcome. So Lisa, I think you have the list of questions in front of you, and we have an hour. We have fewer questions this time, so hopefully we can get through all of them. And we're going to ask the questions, and then if any of the, a little bit different from last time, if there are any follow-ups that any of the directors want to ask, we'll proceed that way.
Okay.
So we'll try to give you as much time to get through all of that.
Okay, thank you.
So the first one's a softball. Please begin by very briefly highlighting your professional experiences and how they have prepared you to be the superintendent in Osseo Area Schools.
Okay, so I have more than 20 years of experience in public education. I've worked in three large systems, two in the state of Minnesota and one in Georgia. I've been a teacher, been a middle school teacher. I taught social studies. I've been a principal at all levels. So I've worked at the elementary level, the middle school level, high school, and alternative high school level. So I think it gives me a good perspective of knowing what is happening in our buildings and the work that our principals and our teachers are doing. I currently am Assistant Superintendent in St. Paul Public Schools. I've been in that role for the past five years, and I supervise 17 principals. And I'm responsible for 11,000 students and a budget in excess of $69 million. In my current role, I provide professional development to our leaders to make sure that they have strategic direction. I provide mentoring support. I sit on our district's cabinet, and I work collaboratively with departments and leaders across the district. And I think one thing that I've been really adept at is breaking down silos and really helping to bring in a strong sense of collaboration at the district level that then actually goes down to the classroom level. And one thing that I really enjoy about my current job is spending time in the building. So on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, or excuse me, Tuesdays and Thursdays, I get an opportunity to really go in, work with our principals, find out how they are doing things, how things are going well, but actually being in a position to get into the classrooms to see the good work that our teachers are doing. And then the last thing I'd like to share is that I'm also a doctoral student at Mankato State University, and I am in my last two classes, which is exciting, but I'll start to write my dissertation soon. And one thing that I really want to focus on are the high leverage leadership practices that principals have, and what are those practices that yield the high academic outcomes for students, but especially students of color? And I am a parent of two graduates of Osseo Area Schools.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, in your work to close the achievement gap, what specific strategies have you used, and what have been the specific outcomes?
Okay, so in my work to close the achievement gap, one thing that I'd like to highlight that I spoke about earlier in the community engagement session was our work around literacy at the middle level. So one thing that we did when we transitioned from junior high schools to middle schools is we actually brought the Balanced Literacy Program K8. So that's one thing, so we could have some consistency and continuity, providing aligned professional development for our teachers as well as our principals, so making sure that they had that good lens. But it's really important to invest in our principals to make sure that they have the targeted professional development, so when they go into the classrooms, they're identifying the practices that they are using, that teachers are using, to really connect with students, but also being able to provide appropriate feedback. With this work also, I've led a multi-tiered team of leaders across the district, at the district level for multiple departments, literacy teachers, ELL teachers, and special ed teachers. So as we were really developing this model, we were really focusing on co-teaching that was happening in our classrooms. And at the co-teaching level, we were supporting our students who speak English as a second language, but also our special education students. But one thing with having the aligned professional development, we also had collaborative planning. So our staff were on the same page, the professional development was targeted, and the teachers learned from each other. And you know, we really focused on increasing more literacy and more reading in the classrooms. And I will say, over the past five years in this work, we have seen an increase in MCA scores at sixth grade for the past two years, and then we have seen some incremental growth at our eighth grade on the MCAs. But one thing that we've also seen is we have seen growth in proficiency, but also higher and medium growth with our students. So that is something that I'm most proud of. And one thing that we also do is we continue to check how things are going. We are looking at our benchmark data to see how our students are going along the way. But with that checking, we always go back to retweak to make sure that we are doing the right thing. We're having those conversations, receiving feedback from teachers, but also we have received information from our high schools that our rising ninth graders are coming in as more voracious readers, and they have a higher level of writing skills.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that question just a little bit. Lisa, can you give a specific example of like when you used a benchmark and what kind of tweaks you would use in achievement gap? And then specifically, did you see a greater growth overall, or did students of color see a more incremental growth, those kinds of questions?
So in St. Paul, we are using the FAST assessment. So this is our second year implementing FAST, and what we really use it as, as a checkpoint. And we give that benchmark assessment three times a year, so the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and the end of the year. And what data our principals look at is they kind of see how are our students primed for success? We actually do data digs with our teachers and with our principals. So again, when I talked about that targeted professional development for principals, they actually know what the data looks like, how to use it, but then that's how they really get their school improvement plans together. And then we work with our district literacy department to actually go into the schools, work with teachers, and give targeted professional development. What we have seen is we have seen incremental growth for our students of color, but it's not at the quick rate as our white students. So one thing that we're really doing is we're looking at what are the prerequisites and skills that students need, and then what do we need to do to provide that targeted professional development? So what we're doing right now is we're really working on small group instruction, and really the art of teaching the mini lesson. So how are teachers really setting in to teach those foundational skills for that particular literacy skill, and then how is it being implemented for our students? And then with our data digs, we have monthly professional development for our principals. And I think about four times a year, so we just started it this year. We have our literacy coaches that actually come to the principals' meetings when we're doing literacy professional development. So the principal and the literacy coach are looking at that data together, and they're developing immediate plans at those meetings that they can then take and go back and practice in the building. Then they collect that data, and then the next time we meet, we go over it again. And one thing that we're also doing in our district is we are really tweaking our formative assessments. So our new model, it's just a nice term, but it's really like an assessment sandwich. So basically, what teachers are being taught to do with that assessment is they are getting different forms of data that they are using to look at where they actually started with the initial concept with students. They're looking at the information and the work product that students are putting forth, but then they're analyzing it as a group so we can have a common understanding of what a benchmark looks like. And then at the end, they go back and they pre-test, or they do a post-test to see what skills the students have gained. And I think the valuable thing is that the principals and the literacy leads, they like having the conversations together. So what are you doing in your building? That's really meeting the needs, and what are some strategies that we can share and learn from each other?
Sure, thank you.
Yes.
So the next question that we have is, so you talked about balanced literacy, and then you also talked about readers and writers workshop. What was your role in implementing those things? And then what have you learned from this implementation? What measures did you use? And then what outcomes have you achieved? And then following up with what changes, if any, have you made based on the results? I know a long question.
That's fine. All right, I'll just check to make sure I answer all of it. So great question, and thank you for asking this. So when we transitioned in St. Paul from junior highs to middle schools, one of the things that we decided to do was to make sure that we brought the workshop model into the middle schools. But what we did is we decided just to focus the readers workshop literacy model just at sixth grade. But when I was a principal at Battle Creek Middle School, we actually did it at sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. And what we also did is that's where we started in our district with the aligned professional development with the core content teacher, the ELL teacher, and the special ed teacher. So that was something that started in at Battle Creek Middle School, in that I was instrumental in rolling out in our building. And what we really did is it really took the time for teachers to learn the new curriculum, because oftentimes, when you're in a classroom setting and you're learning a new curriculum, there's a hesitancy. And sometimes people don't like change, but I had a literacy coach that actually trains at Teachers College. And that's where our workshop model comes from. So to have an industry expert in the building, working side by side with teachers, and really translating what the new curriculum looked like. So traditionally, when you're a classroom teacher, I'm not sure if you recall, the Three-Ring Spindel Spiral Teacher's Editions? Well, the work from Teachers College is really not in a Three-Ring Spiral Edition. It's in a book, and it actually is instructional methods. It's tips and techniques that teachers have to really go and unpack. So we wanted to make sure that we provided that common language, but also the time and the opportunity for teachers to say, hey, I need some help, and providing that space where we wanted to make sure that we leaned in. So that's something that I've been really proud of. But once I transitioned into the role as Assistant Superintendent, we made the decision to roll out the Balanced Literacy Model, the Readers-Writers Workshop Model, across sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. So that's something that started off in Battle Creek Middle School when I was a principal, and we went through some growing pains there. So that's something that I'm very proud of, and I want to make sure I'm answering all the questions. I think one thing that I learned from this implementation is making sure that we provide an environment where teachers feel comfortable to say, hey, I'm not really sure what you're talking about and what this means, but making sure that we're listening and we're providing that opportunity for them to get the targeted professional development. But also learning that our principals needed to learn what are the new models of instruction in the classroom, so when they go in to provide evaluations, they're providing feedback on the right information so they know what the new model is. So you want to make sure that you are equipped with the proper skills to go and do your job. So that was something that I learned from the implementation, but making sure that we took time. But what we also did is we talked about it. We had conversations of what's working well, what's not working well, how's it working in our individual schools, because each site was different. But then based off of those learning lessons, how do we reorganize for success? So this is our fifth year rolling out this model, and I'm happy to say across all the middle schools that I supervise, we're all using the model. We're all providing the same professional development. And when you walk into the classrooms, over the five-year period, you can really see how the level of instruction has ramped up. You can see that students are leaning in. There are more times where students are reading books. So as a superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, we do learning walks in our district. And oftentimes, now when I go into the classroom, our students are so immersed in books. Oftentimes, you want to connect and say, what are you learning? I hate to interrupt them because they're really on top of it, but we've also seen an increase in teacher confirming, and really knowing how to connect with each student, know where they're at, how they're really utilizing that literacy skill, and then how they're going in and attacking the books, and then taking that and applying it to their writing. I will say with the outcomes, I think I just shared some anecdotal data from the MCAs. One thing that I sat down with my team about, though, is really making sure that I continue to have high expectations, although we've seen incremental growth. I wanted to see more growth. So what we did last spring is we really sat down and targeted, what are the three areas that we really want to work on? And I sat down with our district literacy specialists, and we really identified three areas that we were going to provide targeted PD for our teachers. Our literacy leads received the same professional development, and so did our principals. So now then, we get together and we have the data digs, we're digging into those three big areas, and we continue to go back to them each time so teachers really gain the skills and the competency in those areas. And in speaking with my district literacy specialist, she was saying that she really felt good about the data that we are seeing on our FAST assessment, but she's really hopeful that the MCAs will yield results, because that's one of the biggest measurements that we have. But I shared anecdotally earlier that our high school principals are sharing that our ninth graders are coming in more prepared for the rigor of ninth grade. So that's another example. So again, I've used our benchmark assessments. I've looked at our MCA data, really talking with our district principals. But again, I would certainly like to see more growth on our MCA tests. And that's for all students.
Thank you.
What are the key components of a successful curriculum and instruction program in a district, and how do you get each school involved in that effort?
I think some of the key components of a successful curriculum is making sure that we're actually looking at our data. So what does our data show us in our district? How are our students doing? Getting feedback from our teachers about what do they think is the best curriculum to meet the needs of our students in our varied groups. Making sure that when we offer a curriculum, that we really provide training. Because if we do not give our teachers the time, the access, and the opportunity to learn how to utilize that curriculum, and go back and practice, and give us feedback, and we give support, oftentimes, we will have new curriculum that they're really not comfortable using, they don't know how to use, or it might be an opportunity where they felt that that wasn't the best curriculum that will meet the needs of our students. But also understanding that sometimes a one-stop shop does not fit all. So what are the curriculum that we need for our varying groups is another piece. But making sure also, when we have successful curriculum, how do we really involve our teachers in writing some of those companion lessons? And really making sure that we're putting that teacher voice in place, but also making sure that we're connecting with our students. What do they want to see in the curriculum? Because oftentimes, our students do not see themselves in the curriculum, and they're really not interested in what we're teaching. But the other piece is really how are we integrating personalized learning? I know that in Osseo, we have iPads. My son had iPad every day, but one thing that I've noticed for him is based off of what he's learning in class, if it's really connected with the iPad, he is on top of it. He's utilizing it as a resource. But if it's a class that it's really not being implemented in, how do we then go back and provide that support? But also working with our curriculum department to really design lessons that are aligned that really show teachers how to skillfully utilize that personalized learning materials. And then the other piece, so what we're doing right now with our strategic plan in St. Paul Public Schools, we are really looking at what are the curriculum needs of our district? And then, you know, when we adopt a new curriculum, it can be very expensive. So how are we really taking time to really go out, talk with people, and make sure that investment that we make really meets the needs of our district? And if you're looking, and you're talking about intervention curriculum, understanding that in intervention curriculum, there are varied intervention curriculums that we can put out there, but what are the needs of our student body? And we might need to have different intervention curriculums. It might be different per site. But then also, how are we measuring the effectiveness? So how do we go back and see if that curriculum is actually meeting the long-term student outcome needs that we have?
Can you actually elaborate on that a little bit more? How are you measuring if it's meeting the needs?
Yeah, so that's an area of growth for us. So I will give an example from our literacy department. So we use a leveled literacy indicator, or inventory. It's called LLI, and it's a companion to our Readers and Writers Workshop. And really what it does, it's a scripted curriculum that our teachers follow, and it really matches our students with books that are at their reading level, but it helps them achieve the skills that they need, the different literacy skills. What we have done is we have anecdotal feedback from different buildings, so it's really more about what the teacher is reporting. But what we're working on right now is we are getting involved into a survey, A, of who is using the materials, what type of professional development have you used, but then also, how are we really using those benchmark assessments? Because with that level literacy indicator, there are assessments, but making sure that how are we sourcing that information as a district to see if it's working at the sixth grade level, at the eighth grade level, at the seventh grade level, and who is it working for and who is it not? So with our new strategic plan, we have finances that are behind purchasing more curriculum, but we want to make sure that it's actually working, and we don't buy more curriculum because that's what we've always used. We want to make sure that it's working for the needs of our students. So that's an area that we're about to embark on, but thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Could you just, I'm sorry, did you want to say something? Okay. I was just wondering if you, you touched briefly on individual learning, and I was wondering if you could just expand on your thoughts on that a little bit? And then also differentiated learning in our classrooms?
When you say individual learning, do you mean personalized learning?
Personalized learning, sorry, yeah.
Sure, so just my experience with it?
Your experience with it in your district and ideas about improving the whole process of...
Sure. So I will tell you the experiences that we have. So we had a rollout, I think one of the largest rollouts that we certainly have had in the state. So all of our students have access to iPads. So that's one thing that we're really excited about. We have written curriculum that have provided guidelines for our teachers to utilize the personalized learning curriculum. But I think one thing that we could have learned from is what did the rollout look like, and then what type of expectations did we set for our staff? So one thing that we did is we allowed teachers the opportunity to try to kind of play around with it, test it out, to see what that looked like. But I think what we could have done is really aligned it to the different core content areas and provided teachers training and support to show how can you utilize the iPads with your math instruction, with your science instruction, with your social studies instruction, but not as a substitute for the textbook, but as a companion? And how do we utilize that tool to meet the individual needs of our students? Because one thing that we do know, our students are using technology every day. That's at the core of who they are. So how do we really utilize the technology in the building to expand their world? But also, if you have a classroom of 30 students with 30 different needs, how can you use that iPad to make sure whatever skill you're teaching, everyone is accessing it at their level? And then we have a way to measure, did you really connect with that curriculum? How did the iPad work? What are some things that you can go and research on your own and bring it back to the classroom? And then also, how is it aligned to what we're doing as a system? Right? And then what are some standard pieces that we can do across buildings? Because as students go from elementary, middle to high school, what does that use look like? But also, if we have students that are transferring to different schools, what are the consistencies that we can set forth per building? And again, making sure that we set forth and say, this is, these are the tight pieces that we are using the personalized learning, the iPads for, and then here's some flexibility based on the unique composition of your building. And then the other one was, was it differentiated instruction?
Yes.
Yeah, so teachers differentiate, they use differentiated instruction all the time. I think one thing is that word can be kind of a buzzword. So making sure that teachers really understand what does it mean to differentiate? How are we providing time to plan appropriately for differentiated instruction? But then also, how are we measuring how are students doing with the different strategies that our students are using? But also understanding the complexity of classroom teachers, that they have a tough job. So they are teaching 30 different students with 30 different needs, and they have the goal of making sure that 30 different students have learned the material that they've set forth to teach.
Thank you.
What have you done in your district to promote E12 education and the importance of early childhood education?
So in my role as Assistant Superintendent, I actually work very closely with our teaching and learning department, making sure that we are providing adequate spaces for our programs, all the way from pre-K, because I supervise elementary buildings, K8s, and middle school buildings. So making sure that I understand the complexities of all of those levels, but also understanding that not only do I work with elementary and middle schools, I'm getting our middle school students ready for high school. So do I understand what our middle school students need to have before they move on to the high school setting? I've worked on the district level to make decisions with my colleagues on the direction that we're going, how we want to make sure that we're teaching the curriculum, the environment that we're setting in our buildings. But also with early education, we have universal pre-K, and we also have ECFE in our building. So I know in, I want to say about five of my buildings, we have pre-K programs. So making sure that our principals have the support that they need to have, I would say, well-run pre-K programs, but also what type of training do they need? Because pre-K is very different than kindergarten. And then making sure that they are properly staffed, and making sure that our parents feel engaged and involved. And then also understanding that in some of our, many of our pre-K programs, although a pre-K student may start there, that may not be the kindergarten that they go to. So how do we make sure that our parents understand what all of our schools have to offer? And then I meet regularly with our pre-K coordinator, and she gives me information. So one thing that we did learn for our current two-year-olds in the city, that we are noticing some trends and needs that our rising students are going to have. So having conversations of how do we plan proactively, and making sure that our schools are prepared, adequately staffed, for our students that are coming and not being reactive. I don't think it makes sense to be reactive in public education, because then we really miss the mark.
Thank you.
How have you balanced... How have you balanced a set of priorities and expectations for teachers to ensure focus and time is spent on the most critical priorities in day-to-day instruction?
I think one thing that's really important is to make sure that you have, that schools have a clear and targeted school improvement plan, and that school improvement plan is based on data and best practices. But also, looking at the school improvement plan, how are our schools working with our content specialists? So for example, with our literacy lead, what are some of the recommendations that our schools are receiving on what are some of the best practices that you want to put into your school improvement plan, that you're really going to be focused on, and what does the data say? But then also, how are we making sure that we are measuring along the way of the progress that we're making for that school year? But then, in addition to that, whatever we set focus on, how are we making sure that teachers have the right training and the right skills? But also, how do I make sure that we keep focused on the right thing? So this year, we set out to really focus on the big three with my middle school principals. And the big three that we really worked on and that we're continuing to work on this year is literacy, and I've given a few examples about that. Positive school culture and climate, and with the strategic planning work that we're doing this year, really working on our middle school environment, but also the stages of adolescent development. So when we get together every month, we touch based on that, we provide training on that, and then the expectation is the skills that the principals have learned in their training. And when we do training, the literacy lead is always there. I might have someone from our equity department that is there, and then I have a middle school lead person that supports me. We provide targeted PD, we plan together, and then we make ourselves available to go out into the buildings. And then we ask for feedback from the principals. How is it going? So for example, with the assessments that I was sharing that we're utilizing at the middle school level, I am receiving feedback from our district literacy specialist that when she has literacy lead meetings, so every building has to identify a literacy lead, that we have 95% of our literacy leads that are really showing up, and they're leaning into the work. But in the past, it would be kind of sporadic who attended. But now what they're doing is they're taking that targeted training that they're learning, and they're bringing it back to their colleagues, to their peers, and they're retraining in the buildings. But then also, our principals are receiving that same training, so they actually know what teachers are receiving, also in their PD. So it's a full wraparound circle. So I think it's really important to really identify those areas that you want to achieve in. Try to keep consistency, making sure that we don't do initiative over implementation, but really staying tight on what we want to set forth, and then making sure that we have some measurements along the way. How are we going? Because what we don't want to do is wait till the end of learning has happened, end of the school year, wait until the MCAs come, and we find out, wow, all that hard work, we didn't make it, but we were all over the place. So how do we really narrow our focus? And then the other piece with the critical priorities and day-to-day instruction, really doing those focused walkthroughs and providing targeted feedback, so making sure that teachers are receiving real-time feedback. And if a teacher needs more support or more time to plan, how do we move those barriers out of the way? But the other piece is how are we looking at our data in a disaggregated format to find out who's doing well and who needs more support, and going back and checking, and continuing to work that cycle?
Thank you.
I have one follow-up. You mentioned the big three, so what was your role in identifying and deciding on what the big three would be?
Wow, so I would say it was my idea. But what I did is we, I sat down with my team, and I looked at the data from the year before, and I just wasn't pleased with what our data was showing. And I felt that our teachers were working hard, and I felt that our principals were working hard, but the outcomes were not meeting my expectation for all students. So that is why I wanted to focus on literacy, of course, because we want to make sure that our students have the foundational skills. But I actually sat down and talked with our literacy lead to find out what are the barriers that she was experiencing as she was trying to get the message out to the buildings. So I asked her, what did she need me to do to move those barriers out of the way? So we actually did that. And then we allocated time and money to make sure that she could focus on the big three, which was one of them was literacy. So every month, when I bring my principals in, there's always... So every month when I bring my principals in, there's always an hour or maybe sometimes two hours of professional development. And with that professional development, it's not the same PD that the teachers are receiving, it's targeted for principals. And she's intentional, she calls that out, but also receiving feedback from the principals, is this new type of training working? So we've gotten really good feedback in that area. And then with positive school culture and climate, making sure that we wanted to create a stronger sense of belonging in all of our schools. And really what we're doing right now is we've been spending the time really reflecting on the environment that we're setting. And one of the questions that I started the year off asking my principals was to think about, um, the words that we are using to describe our middle school students. So what is out there in the environment that the first thing that comes to your mind about middle school students? And oftentimes it was something negative, it was something disparaging. So what we really did is we really dug into some articles on the stages of adolescent development to really find out who are our young adolescents. What is age appropriate at this time? But knowing that some of the things that our adolescents do, how do we really create those environments to make sure that we are setting our students up for success? So that's some, one thing that we did. And then also making sure that we're looking at, um, our, our behavior data to see where we've seen some disproportionality. And really pushing my leaders to then go back into their buildings, having those critical and courageous conversations about some students are doing well, but all students aren't doing well. So what do we need to do differently? And, um, the other piece with the positive school culture and climate, we've really been looking, um, we've been doing some book studies. So I've been sharing some resources and some articles with my principals and now they're bringing resources and articles to the group. And I actually have one principal who is so on fire for this work that he is starting to lead some professional development. And then the other part, the other part was the strategic plan. So I played a major role in redesigning, um, our middle school model in the district. But I wanted to make sure that I didn't do that in isolation. So my middle school principals have been an ongoing advisory team, really telling, telling me and providing feedback on what's working well. What do we need to do differently? As we created the blueprint, I asked them for feedback. And then I also let them know with this new strategic planning work, it isn't my work, it's our work, it's our work as experts in that field. And then based off of what skill that those particular principals have, then they're, uh, they're leading some initial work groups.
Thank you.
I have a bit of a follow-up to that too. Um, I'm excited to hear about the positive school culture because we know that, um, increases academic achievement as well. Um, you talk a lot in a lot of your interviews about the student voice. Can you tell me a little bit about, um, how the students are involved in creating that positive school culture that you were talking about?
Yeah, so in a lot of my schools, we have a program called Dare to Be Real. Um, and the whole point of Dare to Be Real is really to look, to lift up student voice and choice. But it's actually a class. So we have a classroom teacher and it's an elective and it's for students who really want to really engage in, um, social awareness. So we really have, we have a targeted curriculum that walks students through the process to have a conversation, to listen to multiple perspectives, um, also to, um, reach across the table and meet new students. But also to identify some barriers that are happening in their buildings and to really speak up and provide feedback. So that is then funnelled into, um, more leadership opportunities for our students. So we have student council, um, we have affinity groups. We have actually done action research with some of our students where they have actually learned the, uh, research process. They have, uh, surveyed their peers and then they have actually brought that data back to the staff and reported out. And some of my schools have actually used that data to make different changes in their building that has become a part of their school improvement plan. And then another piece in our district, we have a student advancement board and they actually sit with the board, they're not a voting member. But what those, what, it's high school students. So this is actually not middle school students, but it's high school students. And they identify issues in our district that they want to tackle. And some of the issues have actually led to policy changes in our district. So that, that's a really big proponent. But I think the biggest thing is once we hear the voices of the students, what do we do with it? Because oftentimes if you want to know what's happening in our buildings and our classrooms, ask the students, they can tell you. Whether it's at the elementary level, the middle school level, or the high school level.
So does that mean that you would be, um, if you were superintendent, you would be on board for having students be, be like that advisory council to the board, kind of?
I would want to discuss it with the board to see if you are.
Assume the board was totally on board.
Yes, I would, but I, uh.
I'm not saying we are.
No, that's fine. But I'll say, uh, one thing that we learned from St. Paul is really to make sure that we clearly define what the students' roles are. Because there's been, um, sometimes a little bit of, of confusion.
Right.
And we don't want to confuse our students. But we have gained a lot of valuable insight. And I will tell you, two years ago at our administrators academy, um, it was led by our students. And the power of what they said and what they needed was very impactful.
Thank you.
Okay, next question, and there's, uh, three parts. So how do you communicate to your staff, students, and community members in your current district? What different strategies and actual tools do you use? And please share an example of a time when you successfully used those strategies.
Okay, uh, I communicate with our students, staff, and community members in different venues. Whether it might be a connect ed call, it might be an email, it may be a electronic newsletter, or it might be a letter. Um, also face-to-face, going out and having conversations, um, or it could be phone calls. So a variety of mi- uh, mediums. Um, I love being in the buildings and connecting with students to find out, how is your experience? So when I've done evaluations, because I do go do a classroom evaluation, asking students, do they feel like they're learning, are they getting what they need? What would be a recommended change if we had to make one and then bringing that back to the building? Um, I enjoy connecting with teachers, uh, getting an idea of how is it working in your building, your classroom, and what are some recommendations? And then I meet with, uh, parents all the time, whether it's to problem solve or to get advice on some things that we could do differently. So those are some examples. I want to make sure I'm looking at all parts of the question. Uh, I've, I've also held focus groups, uh, in my buildings. Um, but also bringing parents into the, uh, decision-making. So I talked earlier about our school conduct improvement teams that are in our buildings that really focus on really creating a positive environment for our buildings. But knowing that every member on that team has an equal voice to give the principal a recommendation on how to improve schools. And, um, I've been a part of, and I maybe shared this before, but, um, a Marnita's Table. Where our, our schools will have an opportunity to engage with their community around a topic. And one of the biggest things about Marnita's Table, it's actually an opportunity to have conversation around a mill. And it's non-threatening, but the whole point is to really engage families that typically, typically aren't at the table. So how do we really target those groups, go out and meet those parents, remove barriers for them to attend? But not only do we, um, have conversations around a topic, we get feedback on what can we do in our school to make change? And then that becomes a part of what our schools are implementing. So those are some of the examples that I've used in the past.
Thank you.
Please describe for us what you consider to be the key components of the best learning environment for students.
I think one of the first key components is making sure that we have schools where students feel that they belong, all students. And, um, how do we measure what that looks like? So, uh, sometimes that's difficult, but you can walk into a building and you can feel that environment. You can also see how students are leaning in, seeing what access students have to classrooms, um, to different types of, of courses. But also listening to students. So there was a parent that spoke in the community session who, he had some concerns about it. But making sure that I'm asking what's working well and what's not, and then what solutions do you have? I think that's very important. Um, certainly you can look at the assessment data to see are all students learning, you can see if that achievement gap is starting to shrink. But then we can also, uh, look in our accelerated classrooms, we want to make sure that it's reflective of our, our, um, student population. So if we're not seeing that, that's something that we really want to work on. But how do we work with the principals and, and the staff to make sure that we are starting to identify students? Supporting students and also having the right instructional strategy so those students are doing well. That's another example that I look at. I also look at the behavior data, um, not only the suspension data, but the office referral data. And then I, I, we disaggregate it by race and we have conversations about it. And we try to find out, um, some of the reasons behind it. But one thing that I have found that works really well is having clear definitions for some of the, the terms that students are receiving referrals on. And does everyone have a clear understanding? But really focusing on the most important thing, how are we making sure that we are maximizing students' instructional time? Because when they are referred out of class, they're, they're losing really valuable instructional time. But also behavior is an indicator, it's a data point. So what is happening with that? What does that student need? And as a teaching institution, how do we reteach the expected behaviors? That's another area that I look at. And then making sure that, um, we have a clear and targeted plan and that our teachers have, uh, the right curriculum to teach. And we have a coherent professional development plan. Because one thing that we don't want is to expect that the teachers have a clear understanding of what we want them to do. But we don't provide the opportunity, the time, and the resources, but the right professional development. Because what people don't want to do is spend time in professional development that's not relevant. And then also sometimes in education, um, if the teachers are not on board with what we're teaching, they'll kind of wait for that to pass. Because in education, sometimes we always move to the next best thing. How do we make sure that we're really focusing on what works? Looking at our data, uh, getting feedback from the teachers, but making sure that we're providing that targeted professional development. And then staff, staff retention, do, do our staff want to stay? That's another indicator. Do our staff have a high sense of efficacy? And if not, what do we need to do to improve that? And then the other piece is making sure that our leaders, our principals have the right supports. And then, um, the other piece, in a system, we all are working on behalf of schools. So how are we making sure that our schools have the support that they need from the district perspective? And then breaking down silos too, to make sure that we can all do our work in a cohesive and aligned manner.
Um, I would just like you to expand a little bit on that question in two specific areas. In the education community, there tends, right now, we're hearing a lot about, um, flexible learning classrooms and technology in our classrooms. And you, I didn't hear you mention either of those.
Oh.
As, um, best learning environments. And I'm not saying that they are or are not, but I'd like to hear your perspective.
Yep, so I can tell you my experience with, uh, flexible classrooms. So we have invested in flexible classrooms in St. Paul Public Schools. So we have a long-term facilities master plan where we are actually redesigning our buildings to have flexible spaces. So in our middle schools, our students have an opportunity to actually take learning outside of the classroom. Um, we make sure that we teach the expectations of what it looks like to learn, not within the confines of our four walls. Um, and making sure that our students have access to maker spaces, we have maker spaces in our buildings. Um, with the iPads, I have had an opportunity to see how our teachers proficiency has grown in the use of iPads. But I think that there's, that is an area of growth. Because I think personalized learning is important, but if we really don't provide a clear framework and a plan of how to utilize that tool, then it, it sometimes can become a burden for our teachers. So I think from a district standpoint, we really need to have a clear targeted plan. But ask the teachers, what do you need? How do you need help? And what do you need to help you use this tool so you can help students use the tool? So that would, that would be something that, um, has been a takeaway that I've learned. But for our early adopters, for our teachers who really love it, it's amazing how they've transformed their classrooms. But I think for our teachers, our teachers who haven't, it's just a fear of technology. But, um, our teachers are lifelong learners. So how do we really give them the skills and the training that they need? But also the expectation that this is a tool that we want you to use, not as a substitution for a textbook, but in addition to.
Thank you.
If you could bring any new program or innovation to Osseo School District with no restrictions, what would you call on the board to research and fund? We're getting to the fun questions.
I don't know about a new program, but I would say a new opportunity. I would really want us to really dig into how can we really create those positive environments for learning for all students? And what does that mean in each school? And then how do we make sure that we put that in place? I don't know if it's a program, but I think it's more of a mindset. And then, um, when we create that positive sense of belonging, what exactly are we trying to achieve? And again, I will go back to asking the students, what do they need? So this morning I had an opportunity to speak with high school students from all of our three high schools and they asked some really good, tough questions. But the questions that they asked, it was about their experiences in their high schools and, um, making sure that they were in align, in alignment. But also making sure that it was beneficial for every student. So that would be something that I would, I would really want to look at. And when we look at how our environments are set up, we would want to look at what does the curriculum look like? We'd want to look at, um, how do our students feel that they're perceived? Are they seen in the buildings? Are they seen in the curriculum? And do they feel like they are really a part of the learning opportunities? And do they feel like they, um, are, they have high expectations? Because I think with our students, sometimes they rise to the expectations that we set. So if we set the bar this high, that's how high our students go. But our students can do amazing things. So what can we do to set those high bars, those high expectations, but also provide that support?
Thank you.
And then, uh, one thing that I think if, if we had to talk about a program, I think that we would really need to dig into our career technical education, um, and our pathways. So what type of pathway programs and opportunities could we bring into our high schools? But not only looking at high schools, how do we really start to pique the interest of our middle school students? So that'd be an area that I'd really like to dig into. And, um, if you look at it, we have a lot of districts around the state that are really starting to get plans in place. They're starting to do research, they're starting to have focus groups. So that would be something that I would, would really recommend that we start to look into. And then with that, how do we make sure that all of our students have access? Um, so one of the questions one of the students asked is, um, what would we do differently to make sure that it doesn't depend on your zip code? The access that you get to quality program and opportunity. So that would be something that I would also want us to consider.
Thank you.
So you've had responsibility for seventeen schools in your current work. Um, what have these buildings achieved during your leadership? And what achievements are you most proud of?
Um, I will say, uh, one thing that our buildings have achieved under our leadership is that our principals now work as a team. They work as a learning community and they support each other. Uh, our principals are on the same page. Uh, one thing that I think that has happened in our buildings, the buildings under my leadership, we've really worked on that climate. And making sure that we have, uh, tight systems in place, rituals and routines. Uh, we have rolled out PBIS in all of our buildings, so they are implementing PBIS. An area of growth that I think that we need to continue to work on are those tier-two interventions. And really making sure that the, that the tier-two interventions that we are doing, that we can do with the available staff. Because oftentimes, teachers will say that I'm really busy, who will be able to really do that work? We've actually been working with Dr. Clayton Cook at the University of Minnesota and he is an expert in that field. And he has really worked out a system where teachers are looking at the right behaviors that we want to address. And not only the behaviors, but the academic, um, areas. And then giving them interventions that they can actually do in their classroom with the resources that they have. Um, I think that we have really dug into the racial equity work in the buildings that I've supervised. Again, I talked earlier about that is not a, a one and done, but really what does it look like overall in our buildings? And then how do we really keep students at the center of all of our decision-making? Um, I have actually been really proud of how we have been able to really go hard at trying to diversify our, our teach, our teacher population to be a little more reflective of our student body. Um, my principals are reflective of our student population, so I'm really proud about that. Um, we're never done, so that's initiative that we're doing and we're focusing on across the state, but I'm very proud of that. Um, and then as I spoke earlier, when we do a big system-wide change, so transitioning from junior high to middle school was a little rocky in the beginning, but I'm proud to say that I can walk in all of my middle schools and they have good systems in place. And every school is different, every school has an opportunity for growth, but also with the strong relationships that I've built with my principals. They do understand that I do support them, that, um, they can come, they can provide honest feedback, but I will also provide honest feedback. I have enjoyed providing coaching, mentoring, um, and really developing strong relationships. And then the other piece with the strategic plan, I have been very, very proud of how my principals have showed up to really redesign the model to make sure that it's working, um, in a better way. So with the new strategic redesign, we're focusing on curriculum and instruction, leadership and organization, as well as positive school culture and climate. And it's a comprehensive reform across the district. So in our district, we have seventy-four hundred students at the middle level. We have students in our K eight buildings, our six-eight buildings, as well as our six-twelve buildings, which I don't supervise. But one thing that we've declared with our new work, regardless of what continuum that our students learn in, we're going to make sure that they all get the same foundational skills. So we are about to have phase one rollout of that. And what we did do is we learned from our mistakes as we did our rollout and our redesign. So we certainly are not going to repeat those mistakes, but it's also research-based. So we dug into many articles. And a big piece of that is working on, um, And a big piece of that is working on the stages of adolescent development. Because we want to make sure that our teachers and our staff and our principals really understand the students that they're serving. So I'm very proud of that, and I'm looking forward to seeing how it starts to transform education in our district.
Can you tell me about the achievements you've achieved or the achievements that have been brought forth through ELL students and special education students? We really haven't touched on that, and that is a significant portion of the students in your buildings.
So one thing that I think is an achievement in our district, we had something called learning centers, which was kind of a way to seclude students. So when we did our rollout and our redesign of junior highs to middle schools, we have a more inclusive environment. We have co-teaching in our classrooms. So we have our EL students and our special education students in their environment with our regular education students. Our teachers are receiving targeted and aligned professional development so that they have the skills and the strategies to meet the needs of the students. We have seen some incremental growth, but it's kind of gone up and down. So some years it's working well, and then some years we need to really go back and reset. So last year, we weren't pleased as a district with the growth of our EL students. So we decided to really reorganize, dig into the data, to see where some of the missteps have happened. And then we are providing targeted PD and support, but also monitoring our data along the way. So not waiting until the end of the school year, but checking in as learning is happening. Let's see, we have language academies in our buildings. So those are more shelter classes and it's more for our newcomers. So we're really focusing on language acquisition. But with the language acquisition skills, our regular teachers are receiving those as well. Because we have EL students in our shelter classes, but in all of our classes. And with the language acquisition skills, those skills are good for all students. So our teachers are receiving more strategies that they can use in their instruction to support all students, but making sure that we're leaning in and connecting with our EL students to make sure, and their parents, that they feel that they're getting the education that they're needing. And then with our special education students, really making sure that we are focusing on academics and not focusing so much on behavior. Because I think sometimes we can get so caught up in the behavior piece that we're missing out on the academic pieces. So raising the expectations, really looking at the curriculum that our teachers are teaching, and really having that targeted professional development. So our teachers have the skills, but they have the support. Because we want to make sure that our students are receiving what they need for their identified need, but they're also getting that tight instruction.
Okay, last question here. How do you get your staff to be emotionally connected to you and the work of the district? And what makes you passionate about coming to work every day?
So what I have liked to do in all of my roles in leadership is really building relationships with my staff. I like to get to know my staff, sitting down, having those conversations, going into their teaching environment, their leadership environment, asking them how things are going. I think I spoke before about my role as assistant superintendent. I do a lot of mentoring and coaching with my principals, but providing that sense of trust. But one thing that I really lead with is students first. So my staff understand that I am here on behalf of students. And we always make sure that we bring that back to the core of our work in checking in. But I think my staff have also appreciated the feedback that I have given, the critical feedback, but also the opportunity to share some of that feedback with them. And then I also like to share examples of where I've had successes and then where I've had some missteps and what I've learned from those. So being a reflective leader has been helpful as well. But also being present in the building is helpful. So I like to get that positive reception when I go into buildings. And then when I am in buildings, not only connecting with students, but I'm connecting with staff. Whether it's staff in the cafeteria, staff in the office, classroom teachers, it doesn't matter. I just want to kind of know, how are you doing? How are things going? Do you have what you need? So that is emotional connection that I like to have with my staff. But then also with district-level staff, really lifting up their gifts and talents and really letting them know that I believe in you. And if there's a barrier that needs to be removed out of the way, let's figure this out together. So it's always a we. It's not a me. It's not you. It's us together. And I really believe strongly in building high-performing teams. And the first thing with that is having that positive relationship. So that is something that has really carried me well in this industry, and that's something that I will always do. And then the piece that really fuels my passion is I care about kids. I care about students, all students, and I want to make sure that we provide that opportunity for all students. And I always like to look at it like, what if that was my child? Because it has been my child. What if that was my grandson? And making sure that we, me, keep students at the center that gets me up every day and that keeps me fueled and it makes me want to increase my sphere of influence to make sure that I'm leading on behalf of all students. So that is what gives me passion.
Could you tell us something? I know that most educators have like their one thing that gets them super, super fired up. Do you have a one thing that gets you just above all else?
Fired in a positive way or a negative way?
Positive.
Positive.
Sorry. Positive. Like jazzed up, like really excited.
Yeah, I think what really gets me jazzed up is really working on a complicated problem. Because I really think that there is a solution for everything. But how do we work strategically and collaboratively to figure that out? So I like looking at complex problems, but bringing people in to help me resolve them. And then really being that positive voice out there, but then also that critical voice. So that's something that really fuels me. And in my busy role, going back to school, being a full-time doctoral student with what I supervise, you know, that shows my commitment and my passion to really figuring out how can we resolve the issues. And again, like I said, I really want to find out what are the high-leverage leadership practices that principals have that really lead to closing the achievement gap and yielding high achievement results for all students, but especially students of color. So those are things that really fuel me up. And I can't read enough. I can't go to enough conferences and figure that out. But that is something that gives me passion. Because I think that we can resolve the achievement gap, but we need to figure out what works, what doesn't work, what do we need to do differently, and what do we not need to repeat in the past, from the past.
Thank you.
One last thing.
Is there a follow-up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So when you answered this last question, you talked about we, not me. And I've heard throughout many of your answers, when we're asking about your specific leadership, I've heard we, and we, and we. Could you tell us, is that an intentional use?
That's an intentional use.
Could you tell us why you use the we instead of me and I?
Yeah, because I think although I set the direction, of course, I'm responsible for all that I supervise. I don't do the work alone, so I like to work in teams. But I also like to give respect to the work that has been done. Because I could sit in front of you and say that I, Lisa Sells-Adams, did all of this work by myself, but it takes a team. So I do use that intentionally. And I don't think about it, it just comes out naturally. Because I love working in a team environment and building that sense of team. So it will always be a we. I think that's important.
Thank you.
That was the end of our questions, and I wanted to give you an opportunity as, you know, closing statement.
All right. Well, I will say that I think that my past experiences have primed me well to be the next superintendent in Oseo area schools. I think that my passion and commitment for public education, for building quality teams, but putting effective systems in place will be important and a skill that will be much needed in this district. But also my ability to forward-think is important. But also my ability to connect with staff, to connect with community, to connect with children, and keeping students at the center is what you want in the next leader. And then this, to me, would be a destination place. I'm a part of this community. I've had children that have gone through this community. I've shared before that this is a family thing. My husband has actually sat on two district-level advisory boards, so really invested. And I would love to be the next person that really builds that next iteration of a strategic plan that really outlines the needs that we have in our district. And with the activity that we did today, the Effective High Quality Family Engagement Program Model, I'd love to be a part of building that as well, meeting the needs of all of our district and really bringing our community together in a cohesive manner and really rebuilding that sense of trust that we need to move forward for all of the students that we serve and the families.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time and seeing you.
Yes.